We're recording or streaming.
Okay, we ready? All right. As Chair of the Sandusky City Planning Commission, I'm going to call the May 24th, 2023 meeting to order. And if we could please have the Secretary call the roll.
Jade Castile?
Here.
Jim Jackson? Pete Magori?
Here.
David Miller?
Here.
Steve Pajali?
Here.
Connor Whalen?
Here.
Mike Zuloff?
Here.
We have a quorum. So we will proceed. The next item of business on our agenda today is approval of the minutes from our April 26, 2023 minutes. Is there any discussion as to the content of the minutes, any additions, deletions, revisions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm mildly confused on the attendance here. Counting six commissioners accounted for. What am I, or am I missing something?
Oh, I might have kept Mr. Jackson in and he wasn't. Let me double check.
Ms. Rambo, you'd have a record of that, and if it's incorrect, so I'm presuming that Mr. Zuloff, you're just saying to correct that if there is an error?
That would, that would be fine. I mean, I think it suffices to state who's present, but if we go beyond that, we should be consistent. I'm seeing.
Saying who is not present?
One, two, three, four, five.
Missing you from the last meeting.
No, it says Chair Magori called the meeting to order, so I didn't add him as counting in because he's calling the meeting to order.
Okay, I see that now. I've never seen it done quite that way, but all right, never mind. So we got nothing to worry about. Thank you.
Any other comments, additions, deletions, questions?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
The move is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes approved. The next item of business is a public hearing, actually with a number of applicants, but more, well, then Attorney, local Attorney Dan McGook, he's representing all of them. And I guess the lead parties are Blake Magori, Elaine Magori. And because, obviously, my last name is Magori, I feel I need to recuse myself, even though these Magoris are on the black sheep side of the family.
On your side.
Well, it's, you know, point of view. But anyway, obviously, I can't participate in discussion or vote. But I am told that I can still act as Chair. So I guess I'm supposed to ask anybody that plans to speak, since it's a public hearing, to be sworn in?
Typical, you don't need to swear in, that would be an adjudication hearing. So it's just for comments after, typically, the staff will do the presentation first.
So I think we would start out by having staff make a presentation on this application?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a zoning map amendment application for 2068, 2056, 2054, 2050 Cleveland Road, and also a vacant lot in between 2056 and 2068 Cleveland Road. Parcel numbers being 57-03358.000, parcel 57-02994.000, parcel 57-02885.000, parcel 57 dot, excuse me, dash 02989.000, and parcel 57-04471.000. This application is to amend the zoning map from either R2F2 family residential or R175 single-family residential to RRB residential business at the above-mentioned parcels. The block is both R175 and either R2F2 family residential zoning. The surrounding zoning to the north is RB roadside business. To the east, depending on which parcel, is either going to be R175 or R2F2 family residential. To the south is all R175 single-family residential. And then to the west, once again, depending on which parcel you're mentioning, it's either going to be R2F2 family residential or R175 single-family residential. The sites at 2068, 2056, 2054, and 2050 Cleveland Road currently all have residential structures on these parcels. There's also a vacant lot as part of this application. All properties on this application are across the street from an RB roadside business zoning district. Roadside business zoning allows transient rental and also low to medium level intensity of business uses. The owners and the agent are proposing to amend the zoning map to RRB residential business at all five parcels. Residential business is the most restrictive zoning district which allows transient rental. Staff recommends a rezoning application to be evaluated from a broader perspective of whether the zoning change makes sense for the parcel and expected future land use of these sites. The Cleveland Road corridor is a medium to high-density intensity corridor. There's also a motel in operation directly across the street from several of these parcels, which includes 2050 and 2054 Cleveland Road. There's another hotel in operation within 650 feet of all properties on this application. The biocentennial vision comprehensive plan outlines a number of priorities for this neighborhood. Some of the priorities related to this site are classified under livable city, which states to support development and rehabilitation of a variety of housing types that meet the need of current future residential land uses, including short-term rental. Destination city is another top priority, which defines zoning changes to encourage hospitality. Also determine appropriate zoning for transient rentals and hotels and other hospitality development in the city. The vibrant city section of the comprehensive plan mentions to leverage impeding hospitality investments to revitalize the Cleveland Road corridor, and also the connected city part of the comprehensive plan mentions the corridor improvements, and they use Cleveland Road as an example for these corridor improvements. Understanding the goal set by the comprehensive plan and reasons previously stated, in this report, the zoning could satisfy the above priorities. It is unclear if all property owners are, excuse me, it is unclear if all property owners are interested in transient rental use, though they did authorize Mr. McGooki to act as their agent to rezone the properties. Lastly, if the applicant desires these properties to be utilized for transient rental, they each would need their individual transient rental application and permit, which will be thoroughly reviewed by both code compliance and also the Division of Planning. The decision in this case is a factor weighing the following: the demand for long-term housing versus short-term housing in the city, all priorities mentioned in the comprehensive plan, and the high-traffic mixed-use nature of Cleveland Road and its future as a primarily commercial corridor in the city versus the preservation of existing homes for long-term rental. On May 8, 2023, the Sandusky City Commission passed a moratorium on rezoning properties for the purpose of transient rental use. The moratorium takes effect on June 7 of 2023 and will remain in effect for up to 18 months unless ended earlier or extended by motion and vote of the City Commission. If Planning Commission were to recommend this application for approval, it would not proceed for approval until the moratorium is lifted. There's other comments from staff, other departments, specifically engineering. They asked staff to recommend any additional landscaping screen requirements on outdoor spaces of transient rental property, and if that was required, if this were to be put through. And due to its conflict with the moratorium passed by City Commission, staff recommends denial of the proposed amendment to the zoning map for 2068, 2056, 2054, 2050 Cleveland Road, and the vacant lot in between 2056 and 2068 Cleveland Road, and I'll refrain from saying all the parcels again. If the Planning Commission were to approve the zoning map amendment, staff recommends it be accompanied with the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits must be obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency prior to transient occupancy. Thank you.
I just want to throw one quick comment in that the staff report said R175, but the zoning of those parcels is R160, and you can see that on the map. So pardon that typo. But the subject parcels are outlined in red on the screen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm finding it impossible to understand Ms. Blair. Can we either slow the speech down or not use the microphone or something? I don't know what to do about it.
The, the staff report said R175, but the zoning is R160. It's on the screen here, outlined in red of the parcels, but for the one that's R2F.
Thank you.
So the staff report's correct?
The staff report is incorrect. It's a typo.
Okay, and the?
What you're seeing on screen is correct. It's R160.
Yeah, I have no trouble hearing you. Even if you whispered, I could hear you. It's, it's the distortion through the, thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners to the staff? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But for the moratorium, would staff recommend the zoning change?
That's a question.
Calls for speculation, Your Honor.
Sustained.
It's currently occupied as single-family. There's a decent set of structures that are single-family. It's also a high-volume corridor that's primarily commercial. Looking at it from a rezoning standpoint, I would say maybe in some years, eventually, from a 20-year standpoint, like a future land use map standpoint, I could see this being increasingly businesses over time. Right now, it's all pretty connected residential neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, this is a dilemma because we find ourselves, citizens complaining about housing shortages, inability to find a house to buy, inability to find a house to rent. At the same time, we have a glut of commercial property all over the county. We've just got probably millions of square feet unoccupied. So I'm kind of nervous about the idea of converting more residential to commercial use. I know it's not that simple, but that's, that's the concern I have with this. So, and, and the staff makes a pretty good case otherwise. Not, I don't think the staff really made that point directly, but it implied. So in addition to the staff's reasons, I would add that perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So you said if the, if it were approved, it would not, it would not count because of the moratorium, or it would not go into effect until the moratorium is lifted? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Through the chair, essentially what happened was this, this would be in a state of limbo, for lack of better terms, until the moratorium would be lifted, and City Commission would then review it upon staff's agenda to put it on.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
I only took a cursory look at the moratorium, and I didn't know if it was, I had the impression it was intended to apply to overlay districts and residential neighborhoods. Is that the case? And so you're, you're making the case that not that the moratorium would apply to this directly, but in the spirit of what the City Commission is trying to do, is to rein in the conversion to transient rental that, for that reason, to paraphrase, is that what I'm to understand?
Through the chair, I'll, I'll answer that question. So the, this directly is in conflict with the moratorium. The moratorium is for any creation of new transient rental zoning overlay districts, any expansion of the transient rental zoning overlay district, and any rezoning for the purpose of transient rental.
Thank you for that. That's a really, really important point, I think. Thank you.
Since, one more, if you don't mind. Don't want to cut you off, Mr. Pajali, since you are on the City Commission that passed this moratorium, maybe you could inform us a little bit more about the spirit of it.
Well, if that, if that makes the chairman uncomfortable, Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
Just for the record, I'm going to abstain because I have a conflict. So I, I don't, I don't feel it would be appropriate for me to comment.
Okay.
Again, I can't engage in discussion, but I'm curious from a procedural standpoint, not substantive pros or cons. So is it correct that if this body recommended what's being requested, the City Commission, if there were no moratorium, would still have to approve it? Is that, am I correct in that regard?
Yeah, the typical rezoning process would, that Planning Commission approval would direct to City Commission, and then we would do another public hearing at City Commission, and they would vote whether they approve the?
And from purely standpoint, time standpoint, there, is there any way that if this were recommended today, that the City Commission could take this one up, even knowing that they have the moratorium? Is it just impossible from a time-wise?
Yeah, it's impossible from a time, why, time standpoint, because the City Commissions, or the public hearings that are conducted by City Commission must be announced at a City Commission meeting at least 30 days prior to the public hearing. So it's, tends to be about a 45-day timeframe for them to announce it. We set the hearing 30 days ahead, and then we have to do the announcement in the newspaper and everything. So it's just not possible before the moratorium goes into effect.
Also, since we're on that subject, Mr. Chairman, it would probably be helpful to be reminded, I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that because this is a recommendation on zoning legislation, it would take a supermajority of the City Commission to override the recommendation that you get from this body. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
But again, my question was, could they even take it up? And I mean, the answer from a procedural standpoint, the answer was no, there's insufficient time.
Before the moratorium goes into effect. Correct.
But I guess there's still a philosophical question here, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, the way I understand it, the moratorium is legislation, subsequent legislation. If it reverses prior legislation, renders the prior legislation moot. So, you know, the, I, I kind of, my eyebrow went up when I heard about a legislating a moratorium, so.
Mike, I'm falling victim to your?
Yeah, your?
Yes, okay, let's try it this way. So the way I understand it is, is that the City Commission can pass legislation at any time, which can reverse prior legislation. So the reason my eyebrow went up when I heard about the moratorium is that any subsequent legislation that was contrary to it would simply be undoing the prior legislation, so rendering that moratorium moot. But I'm not a lawyer, but this, this seems like a logical conclusion. But on the other hand, the City Commission could self-impose that moratorium, so, and simply agree to not pass anything contrary to it. But, so it's kind of in the, the ball's in the court of, will be in the court of the City Commission, I think.
So, again, just purely procedurally, I believe the applicant is here today, or applicants are still requesting a determination by this commission on their application, no matter what happens down the road with the City Commission.
That is what they said to us. So I will, I will mention that this is a unique case because this application came in, in time for Planning Commission. That's why it's in front of you today. But the moratorium will cover any future one, so you won't hear another rezoning application for the purpose of transient rental until the moratorium is lifted. This one was turned in before City Commission voted on it, so it's our due process to bring it to you today.
Right. It's our duty to hear it.
It's kind of, it's a unique outlier. If you deny it today, it's not going to block them from applying again in the future, once the moratorium is lifted.
But our duty is to hear it and, and rule on it, and what happens after that is not our problem.
I agree with that, Ned.
Thank you.
I guess I don't mind saying publicly, like, the moratorium itself, I think, kind of skirts around our duty as both the Planning Commission and the City Commission to deal with issues from the public that are, that are trying to move forward with their projects. A moratorium and just saying no to everybody for 12 months, I mean, seems like we're just kicking down, punting it down the road, and we've been punting for two years on this.
Well, they may make another decision later, so. Mr. Chairman, we have a hearing to conduct.
Okay, I just want to say one last thing. I think this body will, will end up voting on this from a procedural standpoint, once the hearing is concluded. So we do have a hearing, and I guess, are there any last questions of staff?
One last question, staff, and maybe I missed it. The moratorium is for a year, or is it?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen, Mr. Chairman, 18 months, but it doesn't mean that, once we sit down and we decide what we're going to do with the overlay districts, it doesn't mean that we couldn't come back in 90 days. I mean, it, it's a moratorium to figure out where we're, it's not a moratorium just to stop the process.
Moratorium up to 18 months, or?
Right, up to 18 months. We just wanted to build in enough time to be able to figure things out.
Okay.
And of course, we would come back here again and let this body review it and give their recommendations.
There's certainly people here that want to speak, but any, on this panel, anybody have any further questions or comments?
You're going to speak? No, I'm waiting.
All right.
Your presentation.
Anybody care to speak on this application? Mr. McGooki, just for the record, come up. I, I know who you are, and I think everybody does, but state your name and address.
Okay, my name's Dan McGooki. I'm proud to represent the Magoris and the other folks involved in these applications. I got to say that your, the story about the Magori family makes me recall a story that my grandma used to tell me about the McGooki family. Our original name back in the 1800s, I think, was McGuckin. And one side had a disagreement with the other, and so the black sheep side of the family changed their name to McGooki. So that's, here I am as a McGooki.
Just for the record, I was just kidding.
I don't know if you hit his comment. He said back at you, he said, you're saying. Anyway, listen, I have a couple of things that really bother me about this thing. And as a lawyer of 43 years, this is, you know, this is kind of a, kind of a law school textbook case, Pete. I wish you could vote on this, but I know you'll agree with what I'm about to say. First of all, I strongly disagree that the City Commission, this will go before the City Commission. I feel 100% sure of that. So it's not, whatever this commission does today, this, there will be a hearing at the City Commission level. I reached out to Brendan Heil this morning, anticipating this very question about the effectiveness of the, or the, the moratorium, and what effect that would have on our application. Unfortunately, he had the day off. He was working from home or whatever. So I left with Paige Doster, my, my question. So I have to tell you all, now, this is my strong opinion. I don't know what your city council will, the law director, I should say, will say, but I'm pretty darn confident he's going to agree with me. First of all, and first of all, let's dissect this. We are entitled, I feel strongly, to a hearing on, in front of the City Commission after this vote today. And, and the moratorium, as Pete well knows, this is a slightly larger point. It's basic constitutional law that no legislative body, whether it's the City Commission, state government, federal government, you cannot pass an ex post facto law. Okay? And what that means is you can't pass a law that is retroactive in its nature. And I would submit strongly, and I'll make the same argument to the commission eventually, that our application was filed before the city enacted its legislation. Okay? And I feel strongly that we have a due process right, constitutional right under the Fourth Amendment, to have a full hearing in front of the commission, and a fair hearing. And I, and I feel strongly that the City Commission is going to agree with me. And we all know, let's call this what it is, it's the old floodgates argument. Okay? And I'm not saying that that's wrong. I'm not saying that the city and the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, or the staff is, should not be cognizant of that. I mean, you know, long-term housing, housing versus the short-term housing, transient rentals. I mean, it's a legitimate concern. I'm not here to argue otherwise. You know, it's, it's a true and it's a valid concern. But, but the facts are here that we are probably, I suspect, the only ones in this category, we filed the application before the city filed its legislation. So I feel strongly that, you know, for the city to, to deny this application strictly on the basis, or not to have a hearing even worse yet, denies a hearing on the basis that, sorry about your luck, we passed a law after you filed your application. That's classic ex post facto unconstitutional denial of due process. So, and this, this is basic constitutional law. So I feel strongly, first of all, that the, we will have a hearing. I feel extremely confident of that. And we will, and I believe Brendan Heil will even agree with me on this, that we have the right, the moratorium has no effect on this application. I'll just say it that way. It has none. Okay? Now, let's talk about the merits of this. Several people, and I applaud every one of your, the way you go about things. This is not the first time by, by any stretch of the imagination that I've been here, and I've dealt with all of you in various applications over the years. And I, and I've always been impressed, and I am impressed today, with the thoroughness of everybody, the questions, the detail. You're digging in, you're doing your jobs. But, and in that regards, I heard several times the term due process, which I've mentioned too, mentioned, and that's a very good point. And, and the reason I'm mentioning this or raising this issue is because if you read the planning, the, the staff report, the only reason set forth, when I started to read it, I thought, wow, great, great news. And it's a, staff report recommends against it because the city, I mean, because the commission passed its moratorium. Wait a second. That's a denial of due process. We have a right, a constitutional right, to have a, a decision by this, by this commission and the City Commission to whether, forget about the moratorium. We have a right to a decision as to whether this application for rezoning should pass, regardless of the, of the moratorium. That's akin, to say otherwise is akin to say, well, we just don't like it. We don't like it. We don't want it. We're going to deny it. Well, that's a denial, denial of due process. You have to have a reasonable basis. Any government has to have a reasonable basis in the protection of the health, safety, public welfare of the, the community to deny a person the right to use his property. And all of our, all of our laws across the land are, regarding the use of property, is based on that fundamental principle. So to say, I just don't want it, we don't like it, we're going to pass the moratorium? Well, that's a denial of due process. It's 100% a denial of due process. So, so, so then to summarize, I feel strongly that, and again, the Planning Commission staff report, that's the only reason they set forth. Mr. Miller asked a question of Aaron, and I, Aaron, I love you, but I, I think you're kind of like, you know, not wanting to admit what is pretty obvious in your staff report. And I'm not suggesting you're being deceptive or anything like that at all. But, you know, it's obvious that the staff report would otherwise, but for the moratorium, I mean, the committee, the staff, I should say, would have recommended this. Okay? And it even says, you know, that the, let me look at my, yeah, it, understanding, you know, on page six of the staff report, staff recommends rezoning be, be evaluated from a broader perspective, whether the zoning change makes sense for the parcel and expected future land use of it and the surrounding parcels. Then it goes on to say, understanding the goals set forth in this area by the city, the city's comprehensive plan, and the reasons previously stated in this report, the rezoning could satisfy the above conditions. So, you know, the wording is, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, the, the staff agrees that this application makes sense. It's consistent with the, the comprehensive plan. It fits directly in. And again, as I said, the, the only alternative argument, let's face it, everyone, is the, the old floodgates argument. And this, this application, if granted, we're not even, we're not even going to open the floodgates if the, if the, if the committee were to pass it, and then subsequently the city, you know, if this were to go through, you know, there's no other one behind us. So there's no floodgates to be opened here. The, 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 the dam- The, 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 the dam is firm. Okay? And, and, uh, and then finally, uh, I think, what it was, somebody said, it, it, so this is more than a philosophical discussion. This isn't just like, we're not here to waste your time. We're not here to, um, say, see in 18 months, you know, no. We're gonna press forward with this in the ci- at the city commission level and, and, well, I know what it was. The last point I wanted to make, and I'll, I'll leave, is that, um, uh, there was some mention about, um, well, no, strike that. If this, if this commission were to make its decision strictly on the basis of what it thinks the city commission would do, then it's deferring in its authority, in its job, to consider this application, you know, in and of, on its own merits. You folks have, as part of the commission, the planning commission, have to decide the merits of this app- application. You can't think ahead, otherwise, why are we here? Okay? What, what's the point of having a com- planning commission? You're just saying, well, we think we're gonna guess what the, the city commission's gonna do? No. Again, that's a denial of due process for, for my point. So with that said, I, unless there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Uh, Mr. McGooki, I'm not a lawyer, so I just would like to ask for your clar- and I appreciate your, your legal, uh, opinion on things.
Take my word for it.
When you say there will, and why are we here, and there will be, uh, hearing in front of the city commission, but that is only if this body approves to move this application forward, correct?
No, I think there's a super majority that, uh, Mike had referred to, that we can, we can take, this, this can move forward to the city commission, it'll take, uh, more votes, favorable votes from, from our side to get our, get this through if this, uh, commission recommends, uh, votes against it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe I can answer that question.
With trial, wherever you are.
Scott.
Oh.
Go ahead, Brendan.
Speak up, please, sir.
This is, this is Brendan Heil, the law director. I apologize, I'm remote, and I apologize to, uh, Mr. McGooki for not being able to get back to him this afternoon. I know you could reach out to our office, and I, I hope to have a conversation with him beforehand, but I was tied up. Um, uh, the way this will work procedurally, based on the timing of when the moratorium will take effect, which I believe is either June 7th or June 8th, is on that date, no more applications, whether they're pending or whether they are future ones, will be, will move forward procedurally. So this would not move forward to city commission. Now, that does not mean that, um, the applicant doesn't have other administrative, um, appeal rights, but the way the moratorium is designed and passed as legislation, it basically stops all applications from proceeding, uh, procedurally. If this had, if this is, if we had received an application after the date of the effective date of the moratorium, it would not have even have come to planning commission. It just would not have gone anywhere due to the moratorium. Similarly, because this is not fully complete yet, um, it's not applying retroactively, it's, it's actually just for the ongoing application, um, it would not go before city commission. Absent city commission taking some other legislative action in the future to, to allow it to proceed.
Mr. Chairman.
I disagree, Brendan, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would thank, uh, Councilor Heil for, uh, clarifying that. I, it's exactly the way I understood things. Um, I have no, while, while I care what the mood of the city commission is and, and, and any legislation, uh, pending or otherwise, um, I would disagree that weighing that in is an abdication of our duty. I think, uh, sometimes you're horse trading and, and, and sometimes you have to consider whether your action will go anywhere or not. Uh, but, but that's not, what, what the city commission has done is not, I'm gonna rule on the thing that's before us, and worrying about the details of where it goes is outside of our sandbox. Uh, I, I'm gonna rule on this on its merits. Uh, I, I don't think that the moratorium is irrelevant, but it's certainly not gonna weigh terribly heavily on, I already made some comments about why I, uh, what, what I think is important here, and it's, uh, so, I'm, since we have an applicant who's in disagreement with what he's been told, um, I think we should just stop worrying about it. It's outside of anything we can do about. All we can do is rule on this, uh, on its merits, based on what we think, um, and let the chips fall where they may. Uh, again, if, if we ruled in favor, or let's, let's say we denied it, whether it goes to city commission immediately or not, it's, it's not our problem. If it does, it still takes a super majority, uh, to override it. And I think Mr. Heil is making the case that, you know, I think there's two sides to the story as to whether this is denial of due process or not. Um, you can argue it either way, and, and Mr., uh, uh, Councilman McGooki's, uh, pretty eloquent. I mean, I feel like I'm a Supreme Court Justice for the quality of the argument he made here, uh, but, but at the end of the day, um, we just gotta rule on what's before us here.
I have a question, uh, for Mr. McGooki through you, Mr. Chairman. Putting aside the, the moratorium for now, just in the same breath as you, I just have a question about the actual application. So based on the actual code sections, they list about three reasons, um, that the zoning map should be amended. So based on this mostly residential space right now, which we know may have future for being more commercial, but with what we know right now, which one of these reasons, I guess, would be, uh, important as far as for rezoning this, these parcels?
Well, uh.
Cause it lists like hardships in the area, change in the area, development that would be in public interest. And me looking at these spaces right now, I don't see, uh, any of those kind of needs actually right now in that area to justify rezoning regardless of the moratorium.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, point out that right across the street, there's, now, commercial property, and we're not talking about transient rentals, but, uh, there's substantial square footage available right in the area that's chronically vacant, um, so, uh, all along Cleveland Road. Now, um, whether, uh, whether transient rental would be better, uh, would better serve the community than residential owner occupied or rental is a, is a completely different question. I kinda think that that's sort of obvious to us too in, in the short run.
Well, I think, to answer your question, Jay, I, I think on page five of the.
Just so I can get a better understanding.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm gonna try to answer your question, tell me if I'm not. Um, yeah, on page five of the staff report, it lists three wa- three items, and I think particularly one is appropriate here.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, it says whenever, you know, zoning could be changed, whenever a change occurs in land use, transportation, or other sociological trends.
Sure.
Either within or throughout the entity, and, uh, whether other extensive, well, that, that does, does apply. But then, uh, again, interestingly, again, I mean, the staff report, um, goes on to say on page six, stat, uh, um, they acknowledge, let's see here, yeah, it says, the staff report goes on and, and talks about the comprehensive zoning plan, then it goes on and says that the, the comprehen- that this application, um, uh, in this report, the rezoning could satisfy all the above conditions. So, I mean, I, I think that's a, a very important admission. Now, I'm gonna sound like a lawyer, but in court, I'd jump right all over this, because that's an admission that our application meets the standards set by the city. It's a, it's just an out, out and out ad- admission.
So.
So that Brendan, Brendan and I can discuss and disagree on all, you know, we will, which maybe we, hopefully we won't, but I guess we will, but, uh, as to whether, you know, we are allowed to go forward to the st- city level, but that doesn't, uh, it, it's, to me, just to summarize, it's just unfortunate that the language, for the reason, the stated reason for the staff, the only reason stated for the, by this, in the report, for the staff recommending denial of the application was the, the moratorium legislation.
Well, their opinion doesn't, their opinion doesn't much matter, because we're the ones ruling on it, not the staff.
Well, again, uh, Mr. McGooki through you, Mr. Chairman. That's why I was trying to elaborate more on the actual details of this, the sections of the code without regard to the moratorium. Just, you know, to get a better understanding, not disagreeing that it is in line with the comprehensive plan, but in this moment, as we make this decision today, I don't feel that any of these are, I, I'm not super compelled by any of these based on weighing it against what we know about the, you know, what, what's mentioned heretofore with regard to, you know, long-term versus short-term housing in the city and, and giving, you know, factoring in the moratorium, not giving that all the weight, but I was curious if there was anything, like, more specific other than it being in line with future comprehensive plan.
Uh, again, I would equate this section of Cleveland Road, uh, as being the closest equivalent to Route 250 in Perkins Township. And what, and, and he carried that one step further, then this is like, this is tantamount to say, well, this side is residential and this side's commercial, to use broad terms. Uh, it would be like saying the east side of, of 250 should be allowed to be commercial, but the west side of 250 shouldn't be.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's the same thing. I mean, I've lived here all my life. I mean, I've followed for 70 years, I hate to say it. Pete McGory's probably the only one here in this room that's older than I am.
I would, I would say.
But, uh, you know, so I, yeah.
I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. McGooki, and I agree with you that, I mean, there's definitely potential for the area, given that one side of the street is largely commercial and the other side is residential, but I still, I don't feel that compelled to do, uh, zoning change, uh, to all those residential spaces based on not the moratorium, but the code sections.
Well, I, I guess I just, in closing, I would invite everyone here to, when it comes to real estate, constitutional real estate law, you start from the proposition as written into the United States Constitution and the Fourth Amendment, everybody should have the right to use their property as they see fit. Then from, that's the general proposition, and then you add on the exceptions which, which, you know, are what zoning regulations are all about. But it's, is, it's a matter of established law that the government has to set forth, the burden is on the government, not on the, not on the property owners, to, to set forth a valid legitimate reason to deny somebody the use, and, and the reasons got to be meeting the, the health, safe, set, safety, welfare, and even aesthetics. Uh, they've broadened that, the, the, the exceptions out in recent years in the United States Supreme Court. But you, you have to, the government, the burden's on the government just to say, I'm pointing to a reason why I should not allow this application. The burden is not on us, it's burden's on you guys.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And unless you can come up with a valid reason other than we don't like it, or it, it violates, um, the moratorium, that's not a valid reason.
Exactly. That's why I was inquiring about the, the chapter, um, you know, 1113 amendments states that the zoning map could be amended for these one, two, three reasons that are listed here. And as I was reading, I couldn't think, and this is why I'm asking you from your legal standpoint, you know, with the applicant, knowing the area, if you had a more, if you had a speci- you know, something in line with these reasons.
I, I guess I, you know.
To show us.
Well.
Other than the future, that it would be in line with the comprehensive plan.
It's not in the future, it's now. I mean, I think the staff, uh, report is written in the present day, it's not, again, let's move away from this moratorium for a minute. We have to.
I'm not talking about the moratorium.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, today, let's assume for purposes of what I'm trying to say, that there was no moratorium.
Right.
This commission should decide this matter based on the evidence in front of it, as if there's no moratorium. And, and look, so now that we've put that aside, I'll make one last point. The, the, the staff report admits, it does admit, uh, that this, these applications meet with the, the general purpose of the comprehensive plan. And then one last point, given that admission, it would be a violation, in my strong opinion, of due process to say, we're gonna deny it. When you've got the admission, and, and I understand Mike's point, that that's, in the end, it's up to you guys to decide whether this, uh, application meets the comprehensive plan. You, you, you don't, you don't have to follow in lockstep the, the staff report, but I think it's pretty obvious to everybody here that this application does meet the comprehensive plan. There's commercial, it's like, go back to the 250 analogy, I think it's very valid. What's the government logic in saying on the west side, well, you're, you're residential, east side, you're commercial? Same thing is what's going on here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
That argument, I, I'm having trouble with. Zoning by its very nature has boundaries. You've got a residential district, you're a commercial district, you can't argue that, you know, I'm on the line, so I should be able to pick which, which one I want. If it happens, I don't like streets being dividers because I don't like, I like similar uses most of the time. I think it's, I should, never mind what I like, I think you can make a case that it's better to have similar uses on both sides of the street in most cases, um, okay, and, and sometimes it just works better to maybe have the, just similar uses in the backyards. But there are gonna be times when the boundary line is the street, so arguing that I should get my zoning changed because that's what's the, zoned across the street, just is a slippery slope that gets you into, you could make that argument at any, any boundary line. So, uh, what, what, what's completely obvious here is you get a relatively stable residential neighborhood, and the use that the applicant is asking for is gonna be basically transient residential use, I think. Uh, so what I'm worried about, uh, in addition to the, the glut of commercial space and the, and the dearth of, uh, owner occupied and, and rental property available, is the pressure, the additional pressure on stable neighborhoods, the properties down the street, the properties, uh, around the corner and down the street, uh, the, the properties in the backyards. Uh, I, I always consider that when, when you, when you change a zoning, what's the impact on the neighbor? Are you pulling the rug out from under the neighbor who bought a piece of property, knowing what the zoning was around him, and then you change his neighbor's zoning, and what's the, is there a negative impact on that neighbor? Right? So, uh, I'm not saying that you would never change it, I was saying you have to consider the impact on the neighbors and the neighborhood when you do make a change.
With, to that point, if you look, that blue on the south side of Cleveland Road, that's Cedar Point's maintenance shop. Okay? So whether you're talking about the north side of Cleveland Road or the south side, the south side has got its fair amount of commercial, we only got two, a couple blocks here, and there's one right there. You go down further, you, there's a number of businesses on the south side of Cleveland Road. So.
Through the chair, if I may, I just wanted to remind you that, in a public hearing, you are entitled to move the conversation along, not allow back and forth, ask other individuals.
Yeah, we're, I was gonna point out that we're in the position of debating, and I, I'm, I'm a little worried that maybe there's somebody else that wants to make their comments. Uh, I, I don't wanna be put in.
For everybody to get quiet, but it's, I guess it's not happening. So, is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGooki. Anybody else who, who wishes to speak either for or against this application as, as this is a public hearing?
No.
Okay. Um, anything further from the commission members?
Go ahead.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I've, um, tried to listen patiently for quite a while now, it seems, about the moratorium or not, and, yeah, I'm past that. I would, I would like to, um, have more discussion of the merits, and I don't think we've really fleshed out all the pros and cons of the proposed rezoning. I think there's been a suggestion from the staff that, um, that it's a stable neighborhood and like that. Typically, if there's a rezoning, um, it seems like there'd be arguments made that the current zoning isn't working because, or the current zoning, um, has. zoning isn't working because, or the current zoning has residential properties that are being put in an unfavorable situation with the current zoning. And I haven't really heard anything about that. The one vacant property, why is it vacant? Is it vacant and, but for rezoning is going to remain vacant? I'm not really persuaded by, by Mike, yeah, there's lots of commercial vacancy across the road, this, this is not what we're talking about. We're, we're talking about more transient units. And I think the, the city commission, they passed the moratorium because they're just afraid of some floodgate or slippery slope or whatever. But the market, if the market is compelling more transient uses, in the past, we have sort of looked to zoning, but I don't think we're compelled to rezone to accommodate additional transient. I'd, I'd like to hear, oh, well, it's not really working out so good as a residential property, because Cedar Point locks it up and you can't come and go, and, or it's loud, and, and that's where those party and transit people, transient people need to go, is where, where it's already loud and noisy and, and difficult, because it's not well-suited for residential anymore. But I haven't heard any of those, you know, merits of the, of the appropriateness of, of changing the zoning.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair, are you finished, Mr. Miller? I don't want to cut you off. I just really, you brought it back up. When I asked my question regarding the code sections, that's essentially what I was getting at. I don't want, I, I understand the moratorium, I understand the procedural problems that we face, but what is the compelling, the reason that we should allow for a zoning change based on just the properties and the parcels in the neighborhood? Because looking at the reasons here that say, these are the reasons the zoning map may be amended, I don't see for this residential area, any of these really jumping out. And if I'm wrong, you know, please, you know, this is a question. I'd like to know specifically what would be the merits of doing these zoning changes outside of the comprehensive plan?
Before he comes up and answers that, I'd want to throw in--
I just wanted to piggyback, because I feel like that's kind of what you were saying as well.
In the past, though, have we, like, I'm thinking of ones on First Street that we've rezoned, and, and what are we, are we now changing our standard, then, of hardship? Like, I, I thought you made a good point when you asked him there. I would say that it would be hard to argue strongly that any of these hardships are being faced. And I can see an argument against the zoning change, you know, particularly in the livable city, right? Just because they want transient rental doesn't necessarily mean that that is going to meet the needs of current future residents.
Wouldn't you both be more interested in the staff's opinion on those questions, rather than the applicant?
Well, I'm kind of asking this board--
I'm asking anybody who has the answer.
I'm asking this board, ourselves, in the past, I'm thinking of one on First Street that we just changed residential roadside. I don't remember hearing the hardships necessarily there either. So I just, I want to be consistent.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would say--
Well, I'll be consistently asking from now on.
Yeah, but on Washington, the argument was that there was some stress in the neighborhood, and it fit the criteria for, for, for a district.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, that was the argument. So, and, and you can debate it any way, whether, whether it fit or not--
First Street guy, I think the guy did have a business in his--
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it's been argued to me that it didn't fit the criteria, but in my opinion--
I'm not personally opposed to zoning change, I just want to know the real reason.
Let's start with the right standard. The hardship isn't in the, in the code for a zoning change. Someone just threw out that word. That's not, that's not the standard.
I think he just was speaking, I'm talking about the actual, we have listed--
But, no, I, I think I'll go to your point, I think, Jade, I'm going to check--
Number one, you support, number reason one says the word hardship, the other two--
Well, I'm sorry, you're all right, I'm sorry, you're right. But, but whenever, otherwise, you know, let's not confuse the zoning change with a variance, okay? That's for the BZA, and, and--
The zoning map may be amended periodically.
When, you know, number two reason, when a zoning change, change occurs in land use, transportation, other, you know, you can read it for yourself, you know, the, you know, that's a criteria that can allow for a zoning change, okay? So, so I just don't want the commission to be making its decision, whatever it is, we'll respect it, but I don't want the commission to be making it on a, on a, on a, on the, the basis that it has to find a hardship, okay? Because that's not the law. And then, and, and again, I'm trying to answer to Mr. Miller's point, and maybe to your point too, Jade, I, I guess the best way to answer this, this concern is like, why should we do this, is to kind of paraphrase, is what I'm, I'm understanding?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, too.
I'm not being an evasive lawyer when I say this, but I'm just making a point that is the law. The, the law, the starting point, under any legal analysis at any level of government with regard to use and restrictions on properties, right, property rights, is that the property owner is presumed to have the right to do with his property whatever he or she wants to do. That's the starting point. And, and nobody can argue that. That is the starting point. So that puts the burden on the government. I would kind of turn the question, I'm sorry, not to be avoiding your question, but I'm, I'm trying to answer it. I would put the, rephrase your question, is like, what reasons do we have to deny it? It's not, the burden's on these guys, it's on, it's on the commission to decide, there's some reason to deny this.
Well, if you stop there, that invalidates all zoning, period.
Let's not debate this any further.
Thank you.
Okay, anyway, thank you.
We were already advised not to debate this, and we're debating.
I'm hearing Brendan.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Actually, I was going to call on you, but go ahead, and then I have a question directly to you.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure it out.
So, just, just to clarify, Mr. McGory is both the, the rep, and he's, he's providing--
Mr. McGory.
I am so sorry, too many names. But I just want to respond to the, the, the argument he's making about burden, from a procedural standpoint, that is not correct. The burden in any rezoning is on the applicant to show why the use would meet the standards in our zoning code for amendments, which would specifically be about the public necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices, as to why these should be rezoned. The burden is not on the planning commission to say why it shouldn't be rezoned. There's not a presumption that rezoning should happen. It's actually the opposite. You need, the burden is on the applicant to show why the current zoning, for whatever reason, needs to change.
Well, this, this is the problem with debating here, is that we're being put in the position of being advised legally by the applicant.
I don't have the right to speak, is that--
You do, you do, but, but we--
We just heard from the, from the--
Right.
I respectfully disagree with what you said, Brendan, but, again, I think everybody's here, here's heard enough. I will end in saying that it's basic constitutional law, and you're, the zoning change process procedurally, as far as burden, doesn't change the, the ultimate constitutional restriction, which has been laid down by the Supreme Court for 250 years, that the government has to have a valid reason for restricting the use of property, period. And that's been the law of this land--
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question for Mr. McGook.
I do, too.
How have they been denied the use of their property? They're, they're using the property, they've used it the way they've wanted to use it for as long as they've owned it. We haven't denied them the use of their property.
No, no, it's not the total use, Steve.
But we aren't denying them the use of the property.
No, no, but there's variations--
Now, we're considering a rezoning, but we're not denying them the use of the property.
Well, under that standard, then you'd, no one would ever get a zoning change. I mean, not to be facetious, but--
Unless, they would if we were denying them the use of the property.
This is a minor restriction, okay? My point is this, and I, and I'll answer questions all night, but I don't want to overburden the committee. I'll take leave whenever you say, get the heck out of here.
I have one question.
But I do, I want, I think you're asking me a question, and I--
I'd like you to finish, and then, there's one more question here, and I still--
I'll wrap it up.
There's varying degrees of restrictions. This is not an overall restriction, nobody's arguing that this is restriction. McGory's have lived in one of these houses, I mean, the McGory family's owned one of these houses since 1948, okay? This is a community-based family that is, their family has grown up here, J Mac has employed 20 to 30 people for 40 years. And, and, and so they have the right, they have the right, as owners of property in this city, to have the government tell, give them a valid reason that is protective of the health, safety, welfare, welfare of the community, as to why they can't use this property for Airbnbs. That's all I'm saying. They, they obviously, they lived, their family grew up there.
Okay, but, but you would agree, we haven't denied them the use of that property.
No, no, Steve, it's not the denial--
But on this issue, that's the question.
It's not the total denial, it's, it's still a restriction, though. It's, it's a, you could say it's a minor restriction, but it's still a restriction.
Sure.
And whether it's a minor restriction, or it's a major restriction, the law of the land, from the United States Supreme Court for 250 years, is the same. Any restriction, big restrictions, minor restrictions, the government has to have a valid reason for that restriction. And, and it's up to you guys to decide whether there is a valid reason to restrict the use.
And a stable residential neighborhood could be used as a valid--
Is that a question?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman. My question, I just want to sum it up, so I understand correctly. Per this application, not including the moratorium, the, the reason why we should move forward with rezoning these parcels is because it's the applicant's right to do what they want with their property, and it's in line with the comprehensive plan? Is that what I understand?
I would reverse the way you said that. This, it's in, in line--
I mean, I'm asking what you're, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what you're, I'm interpreting what you're saying.
I'm agreeing with you, but I would rephrase it to change the clauses, to say, that they are entitled to this rezoning because it is in line with the comprehensive plan, and, and I forget what else you said. And, and it's not detrimental to any, any government interest that, that we could see. So, for that reason. But that's, that's your decision ultimately, and I defer, I mean, that's why you're here, to make that decision on that point.
I just, again, I wanted to make sure that I was getting, using the code sections and the actual--
That's correct.
--planning, and, and not just the moratorium, because I do understand what you're saying about having the application in prior to that going into effect. And I'm, I'm done.
Mr. Heil, are you still there?
No, don't want to beat a dead horse.
Mr. Heil?
Sorry, took me a while to find the unmute button.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm still here.
So, I, I just wanted to ask a, a legal or procedural question, because it's been discussed on a couple of occasions, and again, I can't speak pro or con for this, on this application, but for a zoning change, the first, one of the first reasons is whenever a general hardship prevails throughout the given district, and then there's a number two and a number three. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not aware that all of those have to be met. It could be any of those, is that correct?
Any of them.
That is actually up to your interpretation, as the planning commission.
Okay.
So that is the decision you have to decide, is if the facts presented by the applicant are enough to justify the rezoning, in your opinion and interpretation of that standard.
Okay, it doesn't say or, but it doesn't say and, and--
Correct.
I would interpret that to be, any of these things could be justification for, but I don't see any of them relevant, which is why I keep asking that question.
Well, number two could be, but--
Well, what is it specifically? I guess that's what I'm asking, or what I've been asking.
Again, you, you'll have to decide that, because I can't vote on it, but, would anybody care to make a motion at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman, somebody's got to do it. I've moved that we deny the application.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I would ask that the roll be, be called. Again, I need to recuse myself, and I think Mr. Bajali has recused himself.
Yes.
So that means you're four people voting.
Sorry, Dave.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I see where this might be going.
So are we recalling the roll or not?
Do we even have, does it matter?
Well, does it have to be an odd number? Does it matter?
We, we called for the vote, why are we not voting?
Okay.
You made a motion, you called for--
Okay, Mike Zuloff? Mike Zuloff?
The motion to deny, yes.
Connor Whalen?
No.
David Miller?
No.
David Miller?
No.
Jade Castile?
Yes.
So it's a tie vote?
It does not pass, because your abstention counts as no.
You need, you need a majority to pass, 50-50 does not pass.
And, again, you said, doing this today doesn't stop them from bringing it back, right?
But we need a supermajority.
Well--
We don't, we wouldn't have that anyway.
We're, we're in the odd situation of having denied it. We, we haven't really rendered a rule, a ruling yet, we haven't, we haven't passed it, and we haven't, we haven't denied it.
That's what I was going to say, if the, if 50-50 means it passes, we, or it doesn't pass, then--
I don't think that's what it means, I just was asking a question.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we could get some guidance from our law director?
Mr. Heil?
The motion was to deny.
Correct.
And it, the motion did not pass, so the, the application is not denied. So at this point, you, I guess debate can continue. If someone would want to make a motion to approve, or another motion, those would be considered?
Good observation. Thank you.
Does that mean we have to have another motion to approve?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I point out that we really didn't have much discussion at the table, a lot of it was back and forth during the hearing.
The director just suggested, do we want to have more, so go ahead, rather than complaining we didn't, go ahead and have--
I'm not complaining, I'm pointing out that I'm agreeing with the law director, that if we want to, if we got more to discuss, we can do it.
Well, on, on discussion topic, I don't mind saying that I think both Mr. Heil and McGook are right, I agree with the spirit of Mr. McGook's argument, that we should have a real reason to deny it if we are going to deny it, but it is him trying to seek zoning change, so we need to have a reason as well.
Well, since you brought that up, could I, could I reiterate my, I think we have a strong reason to deny it, I think it's in the interest of the community, where, I think, I don't see, I'm not, I'm not buying the argument that, that the, leaving the zoning alone is in any way violating the, the rights of the owners, and to argue against that would fly in the face of zoning, the whole principle of zoning in its entirety, and I think there's plenty of, mountains of case law supporting the principle of zoning. So, you know, nice try, but, you know, there are other reasons to approve this, but in my opinion, the, the community is better off leaving, leaving that alone. And we, we have too many people complaining that they can't find a place to live permanently. We have hotels that are sitting empty, and other transient opportunities sitting empty, and so, so my argument is that it's the interest of the, this, the community has a compelling interest to just leave it alone. That's, and that's my reason.
I agree, through you, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that as being a valid reason, and also that there wasn't anything brought in opposition to that reason for why, based on our code, it would be in line for, for those kind of changes, rezoning changes.
I'm going to make another procedural observation, and on my surmise, that the two commissioners who voted against the motion that was made, I mean, I'm presuming they disagree with that motion, and if they were to make a motion contrary to that motion, I don't see anybody changing their vote, and I, and we're still at, at, at two and two, no, I don't know-- I don't know, procedurally, I don't know if there's a reason to go there, but it would require somebody making another motion. So, I think that's where we are.
Is it going to, is, so if that's required, it's a move.
So, okay, so you, you moved to approve the application.
Two persons, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Here.
For the, for the pointed discussion.
Okay. Uh, and so it's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion, any further discussion? We can beat this to death, but.
Yeah, can we just repeat the motion exactly as it is so I know how, yes or no?
To approve.
To approve the application.
I'm assuming we're going to go tie the other way and it's going to be not good.
Subject to staff conditions and blah, blah, blah.
Move us along. Yeah, I don't know.
All right, discussions?
Which would be all applicable motion. Permits and, and if there were a transient application, it would have to be approved separately with the requirements for that. So, all, all of the conditions.
Yes, please include those.
So, it's been moved and seconded for the application. We call the roll on that motion, please.
Jake Castile?
No.
David Miller?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
No.
Um, so, tie vote again?
I'm sorry, procedurally, there are two abstentions, right? Please, please call those as well.
Pete McGory?
Epstein.
Even though I, oh, I'm, I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining, okay, now I understand your question.
And Steve Pajali?
Epstein.
Thank you for the guidance, Mr. Heil. So, Mr. Heil, where does that leave us now on, still a tie vote on a motion to approve?
No, the motion failed, the motion to approve failed, um, but because it was a motion approved, that counts as a denial of their, of the application by the planning commission.
What do you say?
That's where we're at.
Um.
I try.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what was the result?
You move forward and however you move forward.
Well, we have to have a supermajority now.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Can I just say one word, one thing?
Yes.
Airbnb down the road on this same side of the street. I'm just saying, I mean, I don't know if you knew that or not, just let me know that. And, so it's, it's not a scan now, but one person gets to do it? That doesn't, does that?
Well, it might be a matter for code enforcement, I don't know.
Yeah, what?
It might be a matter for code enforcement, I don't know. I don't know if it's permitted there or not. I mean, far enough down the road, somebody's.
I think Mr. McGooki can advise you.
Not very far, 10 houses down, you know, 10 houses down, so, and there's a hotel on this side also, on that side also. And I'm making that house look better than ever did. No one's lived in there for years, you know, for why, you know? I mean, and there's, everything's going to be better.
There's buses and semis that come down that road, the cars are lined up, it's constantly busy.
Should they come up and speak to the town?
I would have loved to have hear from, heard from you during the hearing.
Well, I didn't, you know, you know, it's, you, what you do is drive by there, you can see, you know?
All of that was set for it.
It's okay.
You know the area, don't you?
I do.
You've been around the area, you know.
I do.
I saw, I saw, the great house go right by my house.
You don't recognize it for what it is.
Right, right down the street is a auxiliary high bay, two bay garage that's obviously commercially used.
But don't say that you wish that they would have spoke up because all those facts were in front of you. Not the one that it's had, had, Danny, he's just basically fixing it up, that was a good fact.
Mr. McGooki can advise you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGooki.
Not going to.
Zuloff can answer.
I have to look after it. No, you go ahead, I just have.
All right, I'm going to move forward to the next matter. It's an adjudication hearing, um, on an application submitted by Mr. Ben Cooper on behalf of 419 Housing LLC. The application is for a conditional use permit at 409 Jackson Street to allow transient occupancy in a local business district. I would ask the staff to, I guess, educate us on that application.
If you want to call everybody to swear it now, from both of them, there's two.
And it's an adjudication hearing, so anybody that plans to speak up needs to now raise their hand, actually stand and be sworn in. Just one person?
Anybody that wants to speak on the next two cases.
Uh, let's, yeah, on both, there's, the next one after that is an application for conditional use of 306 West Adams Street. So, anybody here on either of those applications, just you, um, would you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Okay. Oh, you've got your, I didn't see you.
Any staff talks to you?
Staff's supposed to swear in as well.
Okay, all right, good. All three of you, you're all sworn in. Um, all right, uh, so are we going to have staff do a?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the property of 409 Jackson Street is owned LV Local Business. To the north is LB Local Business, to the east is both GB General Business and PF Public Facilities, to the south is RRB Residential Business, and to the west is LB Local Business. The surrounding uses of this property is both residential and also a park, and also a parking lot. The existing use is residential, the proposed use is residential, but transient rental. This is currently a two-family residential structure. Uh, the building footprint is approximately 1,776 square feet and has six off-street shared spaces to the building to the north. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow one of the two current units at this structure to be used for transient rental. With this, the applicant stated it's going to be the lower unit of the two. The residential structure is near Veterans Park, the county courthouse, and also the Sandusky Library. The neighboring properties northeast, south, and west of the proposed property are residential uses. The property to the north is also owned by the applicant. Overall, staff prefers conditional use permitting in local business districts to be used to allow transient rental cases where the expanded use would foster catalytic projects that provide a greater benefit to the public than the project would be able to provide without the conditional use permit. Such cases may include the creation of new units that didn't exist before, preservation of historic building stock, and enabling mixed-use projects that bring jobs and foster local business opportunities. The proposed site in this application is currently a two-family historic residential structure, currently housing long-term tenants. Proximity to downtown may drive transient rental demand at this location for tourists wishing, wishing to be close to downtown is within a five-minute walk to downtown. The Bicentennial Comprehensive Plan outlines a number of priorities for this neighborhood. Some of the priorities laid to this site are classified under the Liberal City section, which states the support, supports the development and rehabilitation of a variety of housing types that meet the current and future residential needs, including short-term transient rental units. This property is part of the Central Business District in the Comprehensive Plan. The Central Business District initiates state to preserve historic and intact housing stock and maintain quality of neighborhood. This permit could satisfy the above initiatives based on the Comprehensive Plan, but could also take long-term tenants out of this neighborhood. Further, if the applicant desires these properties to be utilized for transient rental each unit, and this application, which will be one, would need their transient rental application and permit to be thoroughly reviewed by code enforcement and also the Division of Planning. The decision in this case is the factor of way in the following: the demand of long-term housing versus short-term housing in the city, the priorities of the Comprehensive Plan, and the desireability, desirability of long-term rental units walkable to downtown versus the location accessibility and convenience for short-term guests. There is no further comments from other departments in the city. And based on the recent policy direction from City Commission regarding transient rentals, staff does not have a recommendation for the proposed conditional use permit at 306 West Adams Street. If the planning commission were to approve the conditional use, staff recommends it be accompanied by the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency prior to any change of use, and also that the project does not exceed the proposed one unit of transient rental. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to just raise a suggestion, since the applicant has the very same, as I understand it, application for two separate properties that are very close together, um, and the applicant's the only person that's going to speak other than staff, I'm wondering if we should just have staff do the, the instruction to us on the second piece of property. Or, I, we'll vote separately, we'll vote separately, but it seems to me, it seems to me that the staff report is very similar on both applications.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's correct. If you want me to at least touch on the description of the house to the north, I can do that, but the, the staff comments are very similar and I would agree. So, I will, I will touch on if you want me to do that now or later.
Why don't you do that? I just think you could expedite the process.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the process here. These are adjudication hearings, or?
Right.
Right? Uh, is this scheduled as a single adjudication hearing for two properties, or is it scheduled for two adjudication hearings?
So, the chair, if I may, they are technically two separate adjudication hearings.
Yeah, I, I, we, we can get the introduction, but the hearing itself, I would think we are obligated to have two, to hear each separately.
We're, we're going to vote on, on each one separately, and there's only one person other than staff that's going to speak, and the comments from staff on both parts, the two houses are not that far apart, and the, the staffs.
The chair.
The sta, yeah, and I'm the chair.
Well, there's lot, there's lots of reasons to do it, but is it legal to do?
Well, let's, do you just want, you want to have the, the staff do the second one after the applicant speaks? And we have to vote on the one, we're going to vote one at a time, one way or the other. But I'll do it whatever, it was a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add to that conversation, what I think what, what might work best here is I'll give a more of a summarized version of the next property because it is rather similar, and I'll touch on the important pieces, and we'll just keep them separate.
Okay, okay. And then we'll let, let the applicant speak, he's the only one that stood up, he's sworn in, and then we'll handle each adjudication hearing separately. Okay, uh, go ahead.
Oh, would you like me to do that now, or you want me to separate the two?
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you, you, I thought you were proposing to go forward.
I, it's up to you, you're the chair, completely, whatever you'd like to do.
That was my suggestion.
Okay, well, we can do that.
If any commissioner feels strongly the other way, then.
I just, because we're obligated to do an adjudication hearing, I was simply raising the question, is it lawful to co-mingle two hearings?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Shouldn't we defer, ask the law director his opinion on this, and that way we're getting it from the, the horse's mouth?
Yeah.
Mr. Heil, do you have an opinion on this?
I do. Um, please have two separate hearings.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, the, the first application, staff has done the presentation, I would ask the applicant to come forward and explain his position as to 409 Jackson Street.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Hi, my name is Ben Cooper. Um, I've got rentals in the property, I also grew up in this area, 617 McEwen Street. Unfortunately, in 2008, uh, my family foreclosed on the property and got us pushed out of Sandusky, and, um, which was really hard for me. Uh, my heart is here, and that's why I have rental properties in this, uh, area. Um, I don't want anything to ever happen like that to anybody else. Um, so, our goal with my business partner, we, um, are buying rental properties, keeping them at market or even a little bit below market, uh, value, so to give people great properties and support the community. With that said, um, that is a costly thing, especially being below market. Um, so today we propose, um, that one of our units, um, the one on the left there is a duplex, it's currently occupied by two long-term tenants. The lower one, we just moved a tenant in there, he works for the Erie County Sheriff's Office, he has a take-home cruiser, it's been great having a cruiser parked on the road, it's actually added to that. Um, with that said, um, he may be there a year or two. We are asking for that provision, um, so that when he does move out, we can, um, turn that, it's, it's Airbnb-ready, quote-unquote Airbnb-ready. And the reason we're doing that is, if you look, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to keep them as separate as possible, but they, they do kind of come together. The property on the left, um, doesn't look like the property on the, or I'm sorry, the property on the right does not look like the property on the, on the left. Um, we've had recent quotes to re-side vinyl siding and then also put a new roof on it. On that property, I had a historian look into, and that property was built in the 1800s. Um, it was actually a single-family home back in the day. If you were in the basement, you'd see exactly where the horses came in, um, it's an incredible property. Um, with that said, uh, our quote was $80,000 to have it sited a roof. With keeping properties at the value that we have for our monthly rentals, I have investors telling me all the time that we need to raise our, our price. Um, I just can't do that in good faith. Um, with that said, um, our goal is to make one of those units on the duplex an Airbnb in the future when that, that resident moves out. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, it may be a year down the road, but that property would be Airbnb-ready where we can get revenue to increase all of our properties, specifically that one included. Um, it's such a staple in the downtown district, and, um, it deserves the form of glory that it used to have. Um, unfortunately, it just is a ve, a very big expense for us, and that is why we are proposing what we're, or what we are proposing today. Any questions? I can help you answer.
Any questions from the commission?
How many units, uh, any, in this building would?
Um, so the, the one on the left that we're speaking of is a duplex, it would be just the bottom unit, um, that we're proposing, we don't intend. Um, and I, I do want to clarify, we have 19 rental units, um, total within the ci, I'm sorry, we have 18 in the city, we have one in Perkins.
But there are two units, there will be, there will remain two units. This, this change would allow you, the zoning change would allow you to do either or both, transient and either both.
With the exception of what the provisions that the.
So, I change.
Yeah, may I?
Through the chair.
May I interrupt? So, this is a conditional use permit application. It's a duplex, they're asking for one unit, the staff condition would allow them to use one unit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
They could go and do the other unit later without coming back. They'd have to come back for another conditional use.
Would the, and we're talking about the ground unit, or?
The ground.
The ground unit.
The ground unit, and is, is that in the report?
The condition states one unit in the staff report.
If the staff report states one unit, and then in parentheses it mentions the lower unit.
And is it the intent then that the other unit would be, uh, a rental, not owner-occupied?
It would, it would remain a long-term rental. Um, and just to add to that, uh, because I know that's, I've been here for the last hour, I know that's a touch of subject, um, I'm in the business of long-term rentals. That's what, I mean, even getting into this, um, I'm just dipping my feet in it just to create some revenue to improve my monthly rentals, that is my goal. Um, like I said, going back to 2008, my heart is in Sandusky, um, and unfortunately, I was forced out, I don't want, that's, that's where my heart is, and that's what my, my goal is. So, um, please take that in consideration.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pajali?
Uh, Mr. Cooper, I, I like the fact that you're willing to take that revenue that would be derived from that unit and put it back into the property. I think that's, uh, that's a very worthy goal. But would you be willing to state on the record that if we allowed this, you would not come back to, uh, submit an application for transient housing in the other unit?
In the upper unit?
Yeah, in, in the, in the, in the second unit.
The opposite.
In the du, well, I'm talking about the duplex.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah, I would say that on the record. It's not our goal.
Any other questions?
I do want to add something, you brought up a, a great point. I've been doing the rentals for four and a half years. To date, me and my business partner have not taken a single dollar from, we do not, that's not how we create income, income for ourselves. Um, every single dollar has went back into every rental that we have. Um, we have no short-term goal of taking money from that. Um, we have at least three years before we plan on taking another dollar. Um, we've probably invested over the year, the four years, probably $200,000 to $300,000 of income right back into the city. My business partner is a sheriff's deputy as well, I was, I served Erie County Sheriff's Office as a cop for seven years. I'm in real estate now, I work for Russell Real Estate Services, um, but we're working full-time, we don't need the money, we are just investing it back into the community that we believe in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just to comment on what he said, and I don't want to prolong Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just to comment on what he said, and I don't wanna prolong this. I, when I worked for the city years ago, we used to have some rental rehab programs, and sometimes there were a lot of questions why we would do that. And I guess it, it is to, number one, improve the property, and just because somebody's in the rental business doesn't mean they have a lot of cash flow to take care of things that need, that's a tough business.
It's a tough business.
And I've thought that maybe we ought to go back to at least providing some money to the citizens for rental property. So maybe down the road, that'll be something we can consider, if I can get my colleagues to agree to it.
Appreciate that.
I, I would like to comment, if I may, that I think it's really admirable to be only asking for the one unit. I think it's in position where he could easily ask for all units and both. Only wanting to do one and take that money and put it in is, is admirable. So, good job. And I will say, I don't wanna get too far off task, but that's one of the reasons that I think the smaller-scale VRBO and transient rentals can be good for the town. $80,000, that's about right. I mean, that's a lot more, that's a lot of years of renting it out full-time it's gonna take to raise that amount of money.
And that's, and that, and for that specific ability, I know we'll touch on that in the next, the next proposal there, but that's something we wanna do in the next year or so. There's a big pine tree that blocks that whole building, and my dream for that property is to open, take that pine tree out, and then it'll just look over the courthouse. The Jackson Street period, can even see a little peek of that. I don't get emotionally attached to my properties, but unfortunately, that one has got me a little emotional on, on the view that I have for the city, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Pajali.
I would move to approve this application. Subject to staff conditions.
Is there a second?
Subject to staff conditions.
Miller seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? And this, this is a motion to approve the application, subject to staff conditions, which would be the bottom, only bottom for transient.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, just, I can't help noticing that the first app, the earlier application we heard, it was a clear recommendation for denial. This one, the staff, this is a question for staff, too, and, and, and an observation for this board. This, this application is, has no recommendation. So, this basically seems to be implying neutrality on it. The third application recommends for approval. And I just thought that was interesting. And I can understand the ambivalence on this property, and I can understand the, if I'm not mistaken, the recommendation. Oh, did I have it wrong here? I might be on the wrong one here. What was the recommendation on?
It's the same, it's neutral.
It's neutral on both of them, okay. So, I thought that was an interest, number one, I think we should note that, not that we should be terribly swayed by it, or unduly swayed by it, but we should note that and understand why. So my question is, can staff, would staff care to comment on the pros and cons, or what led you to go neutral on this one? I'm sure you have pros and cons.
Yeah, I would say that there could be changes coming down the pipeline because of the conversations due to the moratorium. That's one instance. At the end of the day, what keeps me up at night is the housing shortage and weighing the different, you know, bringing, like Mr. Whalen mentioned, bringing investment into properties is a great use of the conditional use permitting. That's how we have it stated at the beginning. If, if it's gonna help keep the architecture standing, which is what the applicant is saying, we, we know that we have a shortage for long-term rentals.
And these units are, these units are rented now, right?
That's my understanding. I, what I didn't know is that the applicant is gonna let the long-term tenants stay for another year or so, and not do the Airbnb until they choose to move out, which is different than displacing someone right away. I will be presenting to Planning Commission about the housing study coming up. That, that's been launched by Firelands Forward. I think we're gonna be working really hard to bring more units to the city overall, all types of units, market rate, affordable, et cetera, rejuvenating our existing properties. And at the end of the day, bringing Airbnb investment does add vitality to the city. This is a walkable place. It's just such, I feel like the scale is almost balanced that we are choosing to, to stay relatively neutral on transient rental applications, unless it's like an ecstatic absolutely yes, or absolutely no. Really rely on the planning commissioners to debate them at the meetings and, and give us direction.
But this neighborhood is arguably as residential in nature, if not more so, than the prior application.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think for my, my thinking, we, we're talking about rezoning versus the conditional use.
Thank you.
And one of the ways we were allowing these units to go into these neighborhoods was if it was allowed under a conditional use. So that, that's my thinking as, I'm gonna go ahead and approve.
You just, you just swayed my, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna point out, I just wanna point out that, you know, I agree, based on my assessment of the previous application, I think it's important to note that I think this is a bit different, based on the fact that it is a conditional use permit, and that it's in the local business district in close proximity to downtown, which when we were having our smaller discussions, Dave and, Mr. Pajali, or I'm sorry, Mr. Miller and Mr. Pajali, with Aaron and whoever else was in the meetings anyway, we had discussed something about an opportunity zone, certain proximity to downtown and what makes sense. So I'm not opposed to, and this is just an opinion, I'm not personally opposed to these Airbnbs and transient rentals, but I think it has to make sense, especially when we're coming into these residential neighborhoods. So I think what you're doing, bringing in more investment in the area, in the property, is a different case than the, the application that we've seen prior to. So, how I'm going to vote, I would also vote yes for this application, even though it would have been a no for the previous one.
Why don't we call the question, rather than everybody telling how we're gonna vote?
Oh, I wanted to elaborate on my decision-making, based on my steadfast opinion prior to. I just wanna make sure, you know, the public understood the difference in my voting, because it's, it can seem like, oh, so, you know, one person gets a, we're spot, we're doing these applications, it's like, oh, this person gets it, this person doesn't, and that can cause some resentment. So I was just explaining where I see the differences in the two applications.
Can you spike case? I thought the Chair asked, I thought the Chair asked her vote, yeah.
Pete Magory?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Jade Castile?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Congratulations, it's been approved.
Appreciate you.
We're pretty much gonna be going through the same process now on the second application, which is the same applicant. And this is also scheduled, it's an adjudication hearing. The application is by Mr. Cooper on behalf of 419 Housing LLC, a conditional use permit, similar to what we just talked about, but for the location at 306 West Adams Street, which is in the local business zoning district. And the application is for a conditional use permit. Staff, I guess you could do a quick summary for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll reiterate, I'll summarize in places I, I can summarize at, so bear with me. The site here is owned to LB Local Business. The surrounding zoning to the north is downtown business, to the east is general business, to the south is local business, and to the west is local business. The surrounding uses of this site are residential and a park. The existing use is residential, the proposed use is residential, and also a transient rental unit. The site at 306 West Adams Street is part of a five-family residential structure. The building footprint is approximately 3,887 square feet, and has six off-street shared spaces with the building to the south. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to, once again, allow one unit in the, in the five-unit structure to be used for transient rental. And it, this current structure is across the street from Veterans Park, the county courthouse, and also near the Sandusky Library. The neighboring properties to the east and the south are also residential uses and to the west. So, stated previously, staff prefers conditional use permits for properties that are either create new units that didn't exist before, preserve historic building stock, and also enable mixed-use projects that bring new jobs in long-term housing and short-term housing. So this is a five-unit historic structure, and is currently housing long-term tenants. The proximity to downtown is about a five-minute walk. So the comprehensive plan's the same as the previously stated application, and that said, it states that it encourages housing stock, which includes transient rental housing. So each unit would need a separate application, just like the previous, that would be reviewed by both code enforcement and the Division of Planning. And weighing the following options again, is, is both the demand for long-term housing versus short-term housing, priorities of the comprehensive plan, and the desirability of long-term rentals, walkable to downtown versus the location for short-term guests. And staff, once again, we're gonna stay silent on our recommendation, and if, if it were to be approved, we could recommend the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency, and that the project does not exceed the proposed one transient unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Alec. Mr. Cooper, since we're having this as a separate hearing, even though I've read it, and the reasons and the arguments are pretty much the same, I would ask you to state briefly on the record your reasons for doing this on, or making this request for 306 West Adams Street.
Please. So, the revenue used for this Airbnb on, for the property, see the picture? If you look, it's to the right, so you see the staircase is actually another unit that's kind of sectioned off it, I think, probably in the early 1900s, is an addition. It's kind of separated, but that would be used to generate revenue for further repairs, upgrades to the building, as well as upgrades to our existing portfolio in the city. I do wanna add to that one, a great point was that that property is vacant. Hasn't had a tenant in it, and that was part of our, that, that tenant was actually evicted in the process of us purchasing it. So, there's, no one's losing out on house, we're not taking anybody out of that house, or that, that unit, rather.
I'm a little confused on how many units there are there.
So there's, there's five units in this building, it's also, it's a coin-operated laundry, so.
Any questions from the commission, two applicants?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
There's five units in this building, and only one is gonna be transient?
That's what we're requesting today. I'll, like the last one, on the record, I said that, that we will not ask for any other ones. I'm not willing to put that on the record for this one specifically, for the reason that this one has, as you can see in the parking lot, there's two other buildings, or the two other units that have direct access to the parking lot, although that's not our intentions. I don't know what, five years, 10 years? I intend on owning this property till, till I pass away one day, so I wouldn't say that on the record for this. But that is, that's our-
It'd be a whole other process.
It would be a whole other process, absolutely. It's just, and I'm 50% owner of the property. My business partner is, I'm not here today, and I don't feel comfortable making that. I could probably get, that is our intention.
I have a question for staff. So that would require still coming back if, if they wanted to use a, a second unit as transient? This conditional application is just for the one one, or that's the record, that's the staff recommendation?
It would be, it's up to the Planning Commission how you wanna make the motion. If you were to move and approve a conditional use permit for transient rental, you could approve it, just a blanket conditional use permit to allow them for all units. We put in the staff suggested conditions that only, you only permit one today, and then if that were the case, they would have to come back for another conditional use process to ask for more.
The application is for five, and you're-
The application is for one.
Application's for one.
And the staff condition specifies one.
But then you have to come back.
Okay, so, so you're recommending, yeah, I guess-
To approve one.
We're giving what he's asking for.
Yes.
Yes.
Asking for one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Motion to approve the application for one unit per the, and including the conditions and recommendations by the staff in the report.
Now, do we need to specify the unit? The other, other one was the, the lower unit and the two units, how this is?
Well, I'm not sure the motion specified that.
Just to add to that, fortunately for this one, every one of the units has an actual address. The one that we're asking is 306, that is a legal address for this, that's what we're asking for, 306 West Adams Street.
Okay, so the motion would be for 306 West Adams, subject to the standard staff conditions.
Right, so there's no need to-
Motion and a second.
There's no need to, so, so is the motion, was there a second?
I seconded, I interrupted you also.
Okay, move, move and seconded. Any further comment or discussion or questions? Call the question, I guess, then, thank you.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Jade Castile?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Pete Magory?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, it's unanimous, congratulations, and good luck going forward.
Thank you, appreciate everybody.
Next item on the agenda, under Other Business, Mr. Crable has submitted an application for a site plan at 1702 Campbell Street for a mixed-use development. Does the staff have any information on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site in question is owned CS Commercial Services. To the north is both CS Commercial Services and also R2F, two-family residential. To the east is both Commercial Services and R2F, two-family residential. To the south is CS Commercial Services, and then to the west is LM Limited Manufacturing. Existing use of this site is a vacant building. The proposed use is a mixed-use business or residential building. The applicant plans to revitalize the site and make it a mixed-use property. Mixed-use sites are permitted in this zoning district if all uses are either permitted or permitted main or accessory use. The applicant is proposing to conduitize the entire building, which includes seven condos on the top floor, a commercial space/restaurant on the main floor or ground level, and also a commercial/retail/office space opportunity on the lower floor. So there'll be a top, middle, and lower, so three total floors as part of the mixed use. And each unit will be individually owned if the applicant wishes to proceed in that approach. The building coverage of this building is 13,374 square feet, and covers 25% of the site, which is well below the 50% maximum threshold. The applicant is proposing 82 parking spaces, which, after staff analysis today, I believe was lowered to, let's see here, 76. The parking spaces and driveways will have an area coverage of 36,044 square feet. The applicant is proposing 4,000 square feet of landscaping, which includes one landscaping island of 394 square feet, which meets our zoning requirements of 300 square feet. The hours of the site are gonna vary by use, and since there's not a use that is in stone at the site, it's, it's impossible for staff to give an exact parking measurement, but I'll touch on that in a little bit. The applicant is proposing to provide lighting that fully points away from adjacent residential properties. The applicant has stated that architectural lighting may be used on the building, and that the applicant is still searching for tenants for all levels. So the required parking spaces here, after a strict zoning code interpretation based on the uses provided, or the use of options provided by the applicant, rather, would be 152 spaces, provided currently is 176. So, there is, based on a very strict interpretation of zoning code, a parking shortage here, but based on the mixed use of the property, and also potential fluctuating business hours of all those uses, the staff is comfortable with the current parking layout. And the applicant has also reached out to an adjacent property owner. To the east, it is North Coast Customs, a car shop, to allow him to use their parking spaces after hours. Nothing has been formally agreed upon yet. Staff handed out what that agree, agreement is to you all prior to the meeting. So that is just to keep in consideration for any parking concerns. So, staff is concerned that maybe adding an additional parking, or excuse me, lighting source on the site, if you look, there's currently four sources, without a super exact representation of where the light will hit on the site. Staff just wanted to bring to the table the discussion of possibly adding a fifth lighting source if needed in the southern portion of the parking lot, or at least for the applicant to further touch on that. One more thing to touch on, based on the comprehensive plan, this is a focal point, it's part of the Campbell Street corridor, which the comprehensive plan mentions as a focal corridor. It's also in the livable city portion, it talks about supporting the development of rehabilitated housing types, which include upper-floor condos and lofts, which this applicant meets, and also short-term housing rental. It also mentions mixed-use multifamily developments through targeted rehab, which the applicant's also met during, in the vibrant city section of the comprehensive plan. It talks about reclaiming and repurposing blighted land sites for industrial development/ commercial development, which the applicant is meeting. So all landscaping requirements have been met based on staff and also applicant discussion throughout the last month, month and a half. There's also been a, a good amount of updates, which is, includes traffic flow and entry-sequence details on their plans, parking space aisle with details, additional landscaping, dumpster location called out, official lighting plan, and official landscaping plan. The applicant is also planning on putting a six-foot privacy- The applicant is also planning on putting a six-foot privacy fence along the area in red, the red line on your screen, which the zoning code recommends on any residential, along any residential zoning, which is what's being done here. All of that is residential zoning. And as mentioned previously, they are meeting the landscaping requirements. The minimum square footage requirement for a landscape island is 300, and they are exceeding that by 94 feet at 394. There are three trees on the site, so every 25 parking spaces would require one. They are currently providing 76. I might have said 70, I think it did say 76 previously. It is 76, so that would trigger three tree requirements. There are no comments by any other staff besides the building department, which is just a reminder that any submitter, that they will need submittal showing compliance with Ohio Building Code and ADA codes in a previous part of this process. And based on all these, staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan at 1702 Campbell Street with the following conditions. That's that all applicable permits are obtained through the building department, engineering department, Division of Planning, or any other applicable agency prior to any construction. That seven parking spaces are dedicated for residential units in the parking lot. And a third is that light sources are shielded from adjoining residential districts and shall not be of excessive brightness. And I was going to put on the record, I did get a call and an email from the neighbor to, directly to the east of the building for reference, and they were concerned with the aisle being up to their property line or existing fence. Based on the drawings, staff doesn't have any concerns of this. The drawings show that it won't be on the fence, but I did tell this concerned citizen that I put it on the record that we'd at least want two feet off of that property line to meet her request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to staff, by the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Zuloff.
Just for clarification, and are we talking about existing lighting, the lighting you noted on the, okay, let me back up here. I'm going to pitch a fuss again about the ability to read these site plans. We were, you know, the bed sheets that were formally required to be submitted, E-size 12 sheets was overkill, but now we're handed sheets that, at least in the printed version, are completely impossible to make any headers or tails of. And I'm looking at the PDFs, and I, it would appear with the readers I'm using that there is insufficient, it might be the reader, the insufficient resolution to read these plans. So, I'm going to start voting no on this stuff if I can't read the plans, and I think we all should. It may be the reader, but no, I'm seeing that some of this, I might be wrong.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps Mr. Fike or Mr. Crable could come to the podium and give you a.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not.
Rather than trying to read something you can't read, maybe we can get the information?
I'm just, I'm just saying that, okay, if I could just finish my point, I'm concerned that at least some of us may be flying blind here and not reading the actual site plan before we make our decisions. Back to the lighting. Is it existing lighting? Is it all new lighting? And are you aware that we've been, virtually all our site plans over the last several years have required, conditioned the approval on full cutoff or fully shielded? In other words, dark sky compliant lighting.
Just for the record, I'm John Fike, the architect for the project, 224 East Water Street. This is Mr. Crable. He's the owner of the.
304 East Water Street.
And drawings are submitted to the city in several formats, the PDFs, actually those are prepared to 24 by 36, but don't copy real well. I don't know how they're distributed electronically.
Yeah, electronically, we combine PDFs, so what was given in the packet was an electronic copy of what was given from the applicant, and based on staff's analysis of the site plan. I didn't personally have any issues using it on my desktop computer as far as quality, so if there's any issues, we can address them, but based on my use of it, I didn't personally have any issues with it.
But to answer your first question, there is no existing lighting right now.
Thank you.
What's is proposed is lighting, light poles, the fixtures were submitted as part of it, and they come with 100% cutoff, so that, and they're all along, there's three along the fence and one along on Sloan Street. The idea is that keeping all the lighting away from the residential properties.
Well, right, and what we're looking for with full cutoff, the definition is basically all the light goes downward, nothing, these cobras or even wall packs that face outward do not comply. It has to be the kind of lighting that keeps, dark sky, keeps the sky dark, lights the ground, doesn't waste the light, you know, causing sky glow and interfering with celestial navigation and everything else.
Trying to keep things simple, the correct light poles and light fixtures were submitted to the city with everything you've requested. There's no lighting that's been submitted on the building. That's a different phase.
Right.
And that, that lighting is not for site lighting, that's for lighting the building.
Yeah, thank you. Because I know the staff is working on a lighting ordinance. We don't have one yet, but we have been conditioning the, these site plans on full cutoff or fully shielded.
In what was submitted to the city, they will, Alec may recall this, the lighting fixtures were rated as dark sky lighting, and I think you saw the.
Thank you.
Certification that was on the.
Yeah, I can concur with that, and I am by no means a lighting expert, and I'll say on the record, I'm not an expert reading lighting plans specifically, but it did say on the brochure sheet that I was given that it was, or at least able to be, dark sky friendly.
And if I could complete my comment, while we have conditioned approval on virtually every site plan on full cutoff or fully shielded lighting, in several cases, they have not been compliant, and there's, you know, so I would ask this comment to the staff, and remind the staff to make sure that, you know, pass it on to inspection and code compliance that we pay attention to that. In some cases, these were luminaries that could be compliant if they were installed horizontally, and then they agreed to do it, and then they installed them, you know, at a 45-degree angle, kind of intuitively, but wrong. And this is sort of outside the application, but it isn't? Thank you.
I think that there was a question or comment made. We are showing four light fixtures, and there was a staff request for a fifth light fixture?
Mr. Chairman, if I could touch on that.
May I approach the screen?
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, I think that the request is for another light fixture in this area?
The concern is that it would be really dark over there.
The reason we didn't is that fixture would be aimed at the residence, and so we're trying to keep them around the perimeter.
We're trying to keep all the lighting going away from the residential, even though, you know, with the, I don't know what you should call it, I call it a snoot, but a device that, you know, blocks light going. We were trying to make sure that any light that was coming onto the parking lot was also not just engineered to come straight down, but that in effect, it couldn't go back. So, if we put a light fixture here, is there a chance that somehow that's, you know, somebody in those residential lots up there, you know, could have a problem with it? That's the only reason we did not put a fifth one in.
I would invite everyone concerned to research darksky.org or something similar. Take a minute, and you'll understand that pointing it away from residents would be a blatant violation of the principles, because that would send at least some of the light above horizontal. So, you pretty much, you kind of stuck with, and, you know, one of these things is going to bring the presentation that was really well-received at BCC here, and maybe we can work on it, but we have to make sure everybody understands what this means too, so.
Just, for our part, we're just trying to.
Sure.
Do the best we can to meet the dark skies, stand there, and to prevent any problems of lighting with our neighbors.
Right, and there's no doubt of the good faith of the, of you folks and everybody involved, some of this stuff is counterintuitive and takes a little bit of work to get it right. So, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve this application, subject to the recommendation wanted to the staff.
Could we add the, the full cutoff fixture like we always do?
I don't know if it, we have to put the additional light in there.
We've been doing it.
Yeah.
Well, a motion has.
Yeah, I made a motion if somebody else wants to make it.
Is there anybody care to second the motion? I'll second it, as submitted, actually. Any discussion on the motion is made?
Can I amend the motion to add the requirement for full cutoff or, or fully shielded fixtures like we've always been doing, and why change it?
Is there a second to the amendment?
You guys said you don't have a problem with dark sky compliant lights.
That's what we submitted.
That's what we, yeah. That's already there.
I'll second the motion.
Is that, is that already in the application, in the plan?
The light fixtures we submitted.
With the additional light fixture?
Yeah, they have the.
Oh, okay.
It's all there.
So, I'm sorry, I don't, are we, I just want to clarify.
It's not the additional light fixture.
Yeah, it's not, the motion is not for the additional.
It's just the dark sky compliant.
Dark sky compliant light fixtures, which.
The current motion that's on the table does not include the fifth fixture, correct?
Correct.
That was my.
So, it's four fixtures, dark sky lighting compliant.
Right. Okay, so just to clarify, are we relying on this statement that that's the intent, or does the application specifically say full cutoff or fully shielded fixtures on the application?
My motion, my motion was for dark sky and not the additional light. No, that's not my intent. I'm being very clear on what my motion is, Mr. Zuloff.
My profound apologies, I misunderstood. Your motion was for the dark, for the full cutoff fixtures.
Yeah, the ones they included, without the additional one.
Well, I don't remember.
The confusion was, he didn't want to add a fifth fixture.
Yeah, I don't.
He did, he's good with the dark sky compliant lights.
Thank you. So, the amendment makes no sense, because I'm asking for an amendment that's already in there.
Well, I thought you were amending it for the additional light.
No, not at all.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for your clarification, Mr. Zuloff.
Nor would I have seconded that one.
So, is it fair to say then that the applicant, that the original motion was for the full cutoff or fully shielded fixtures, but not an additional one?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was the idea.
Never mind that amendment.
Well, it's been seconded, I.
It was out of order. You can rule it out of order because it makes no sense.
All right, all right.
Okay.
I'll rule it out of order.
Thank you.
Self-tempting. Do you get it, Mr. Zuloff?
Any discussion, any further discussion on the original motion that's been moved and seconded? Hearing none, I guess we'll call the question.
Pete McGory.
Yes.
Mike Zuloff.
Yes.
David Miller.
Yes.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
Connor Whalen.
Yes.
Jade Castile.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck going forward.
Yeah, I'm excited to see somebody doing something with that building.
I'm sorry, Steve, Steve, I missed enough words that I missed that part.
No offense, no offense taken, Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, it's, the sound stuff is making me nuts.
Yeah, it is kind of muffled.
Well, you were close enough to the microphone that I was getting too.
Is there going to be a presentation here?
Oh, good, I can't wait.
But, sorry. I think I lost this computer. We got it, we got it.
That's cool, it's just an escape. Yeah, exactly. We're broadcasting this down in Florida, though. Yeah, I agree.
I've been asked very nicely by the professor of this class to get a photo of me presenting this to the public body, so I'm just going to smile while Quinn takes the photo. I'm telling you that story.
Quinn, come over here next.
They've already won a student award for this, and then they're going to submit for a student award for the American Planning Association Ohio Conference, so.
Smile.
Oh, we're all in it.
So, I just want to give you an overview of the results from a student project for the city of Sandusky. They created a climate migration adaption plan for us. They originally reached out, this was the, it's third-year junior undergraduates class of city and regional planning students at the Ohio State University, and they reached out and were very interested to study Sandusky as a potential destination to increase our residents in the city, because we could be a climate migration haven, or a climate haven. So, I'm just going to present, this is, again, this is a student project, this is their ideas for how we might attract new residents, and I wanted to share the findings with you.
This is for when Miami Beach gets flooded?
Exactly, exactly. So, this is the team of students that worked on this project. It was their idea, they reached out to us and asked if we would be their client, so they are kind of acting as consultants to create this plan for us. I put together a few lectures at the beginning based on the direction from their professor, Dr. Kyle Ezell, and they, I spoke to them a couple of different times about the context of the city. I brought, Alec was on a call with them. I brought together some other stakeholders, like from Shores and Islands, Ohio, and Destination Sandusky, a couple of other groups, just to talk to them about what's going on in the city. And they came together with this climate migration plan, and they are, the mission statement is that the plan provides recommendations for the city to enhance the elements of the built-in social environments that attract, inspire, and welcome those seeking to rehome in a climate refuge city. So, the first thing, they clarified what is climate migration, and they define this as relocation either due to or in anticipation of or avoidance of experiencing climate-related disasters, and that might be hurricanes, earthquakes, et cetera. That the city of Sandusky is situated in a climate resilient area, although no place is entirely climate safe, and as climate change continues, more climate migrants will emerge, more movement will happen because of climate migration, is their expectation. So, they threw in one note about climate change, that most scientists believe the data is irrefutable, some consider the idea is controversial, but regardless, many people who, you know, don't want to be experiencing hurricanes, forest fires, severe droughts, or other national disasters, might consider moving to Sandusky to alleviate their hazard-related anxiety and therefore increase their quality of life. There are some cities that are famously marketing themselves as climate havens, including Buffalo, New York, and Duluth, Minnesota. They, they are using this as a strategy to attract new residents as part of their city policy, and Buffalo has experienced population increase, first time since 1950, and Duluth, Minnesota's population is stabilizing. Interestingly, climate scientists have drawn this triangle, so climate researchers drew this triangle from Duluth to Buffalo to Cincinnati, Ohio, as the safest place in the United States, basically like the place, the place in the United States, the least likely to suffer from climate-related hazard, environmental hazards. So, we're least likely to get tidal waves and crazy rains, and I know, right? So, here's Sandusky, Ohio, right smack in the middle, and so that's why the students really were interested to take a look at the city. They did a bunch of research beyond the meetings that we had, they did a bunch of research about climate migration and climate change, they did some case studies, which you can see in the document, and anybody that's interested in this whole document, I did put it in your planning commission packet, so you've got the full document for anybody at home, it's interesting. And then they brought us this plan. And then they brought us this plan. They created a couple quotes from potential people that might want to move here, people tight, you know, Julie from Phoenix is tired of worrying about droughts, and Michael from Miami is worried about hurricane season getting worse. So they are suggesting that we could potentially increase our population, I think by 5,000 people in, by 2035, so in about 12 years, with climate migrants. This Chris from New York City said that he can work and live anywhere remotely, or she, and is ready to move somewhere beautiful with four seasons where they can boat and fish and enjoy sandy beaches such as city of Sandusky and the region. So they think that right away, this is our target market, is potentially people that can live anywhere and work remotely, which I would agree with. So one of the exercises I did was, I gave them a couple sites, they are, they wanted to do an urban design analysis of how would we, what it would look like if we added new buildings. And so this is not, I didn't look at the owners of these sites, or what the zoning was, I just toolled around with these students on Google Maps and found some big sites. I was like, here, why don't you draw us what you think should go on this one? So this is a student exercise, junior-level undergrads. I didn't ask any permission, I just pointed them at these sites so that you could see what they think should go on them. So I just want to give it that caveat. One was Sandusky Plaza, two was the kind of first through fifth neighborhood that has a lot of vacant land, three is a big greenfield site on the west side, it's on the Perkins Avenue right of way, but there's no big, there's, you know, Perkins Ave doesn't go there, but there's a right-of-way that goes there, and then number five is similar, is a big kind of greenfield site along an old rail corridor. And they took a look at the sites, they did some, you know, what you do in a planning exercise, laid some trace paper wherever, started to look at the context, what they thought would be available, and they came up with actually some really stunning graphics, better than what my class project did in grad school, so I was really impressed with that. They did a number of critiques where they worked together, they split up into teams, each team took one of the sites, and then they gave each other feedback and came up with what they proposed to us in the plan. Just some photos of them at work. And this one gives me like a little bit of nostalgia, but also a little like, oh, because that's where I went to grad school, and it's a stressful place to be during these projects. So the first one, Sandusky Plaza, you're well familiar with this, kind of aging strip center plaza on Cleveland Road. And they suggested a mixed-use project here, and again, financing was not even part of this, it was just kind of an urban design study, with ample sidewalks, attractive decor, comfortable seating, a sense of place and identity for Sandusky Plaza. And they're suggesting that this could bring units for 1,800 new Sanduskins, and that is, so you'll see on this, it's a multifamily residential in yellow and a mixed-use building along Cleveland Road. And they provided some renderings about what that plaza might look like, and what the architecture might look like for a three-story mixed-use project with parking kind of embedded, but the project addressing the street around the edges. I did tell them, I think those sidewalks are a little bit narrow for Cleveland Road, it's pretty, pretty loud, high-volume corridor. But I had to give them a little bit of negative feedback, but I gave them a lot of positive feedback too, when they presented this to us. The second site is first through fifth, and so this is, it is a neighborhood, it's got residential in it, but it also has a lot of vacant property, and they asked me, is this like, you know, should we scrape this and draw something new? And I was like, well, what if you drew some infill, you know, what would that look like if you could add to the environment, the built environments that are already there? So they brought this, kind of an infill project that really matches the context of what's already there. And they suggested 620 new Sanduskins could fit in this area, mostly single-family residential addition projects, you can kind of see that light green populating the currently vacant parcels, and then maybe some multifamily or mixed-use along First Street, which is a higher-traffic corridor. They called this innovative soft mixed-use, I can't remember the explanation there, but it's got a little bit more of a neighborhood context along First Street, and then town homes and single-family homes. And interestingly, I thought that everything that they drew that was single-family always had an ADU, every single one had an accessory dwelling unit. So that means this is a single-family home, but they were already making the assumption that you would want an apartment above the garage to give a little gentle density, and that was just kind of their baseline, which I thought was interesting. This is a greenfield site, number three, and they suggested this could fit 1,300 new Sanduskins. This area has been molded into a family-friendly space that would be desirable for new families looking to relocate in a climate haven. It's got a mixture of some multifamily residential at the east, which mirrors or kind of answers to the other multifamilies in that neighborhood, and then single-family throughout. And again, they're, they called this the Firelands Residential Development, and all of their single-family residential has an ADU as well, so they are effectively two-family. Site number four is downtown, this is where Mac Iron is, at the end of Warren Street along Water Street. And they, this is another point of feedback you gave, I was like, so you put a big building right at the end of Warren Street, but Sandusky Streets, you can see the water from many blocks away, so this would never fly, we would never want to put a building right at the end of that street because it blocks the views of the water. But they suggested a mixed-use commercial development to be more like a downtown development, and with big plaza spaces, so they put, this is, you know, pretty tall, they thought that it would be appropriate, was that like three, like eight, I think it's eight stories along Water Street there, and then four stories towards the neighborhood, with enough units for 2,100 people, taking advantage of views of the water, et cetera. This is the final greenfield site where they suggested a rails-to-trails residential, because there's an abandoned rail corridor going through there, they're thinking that could be an amenity for the neighborhood, for walking and biking, and a suggestion mix of multifamily and single-family. And again, the single-family has accessory dwelling units embedded, so they're actively two-family, two-family structures, even though they have the character of a single-family So their marketing strategy is already mentioned, they think that that remote worker is our, our most likely group of people that would move here right of way, and people that are more specifically worried about climate change would come along in the years after. So they think we can quickly become a climate change haven for thousands of migrants, and that we have the infrastructure, and we do as a city that used to be a lot bigger, we have the infrastructure and the land to accommodate thousands of additional residents easily, that they gave us some marketing strategies in the plan, and they said that, when this, I gave them this prompt, we, I asked them to be bold in proposing ideas, and they, they think the Sandusky's location, natural beauty and resources, and the novel boat and beach culture make it a simple way forward to attracting new residents to the city.
Very nice.
Any questions for me? I could relay to the professor.
Out of the mouths of babes.
Thank you for your audience, I think, they were really excited that I was presenting this to you tonight.
So are they focusing on like a lot of remote working as opposed to where all these, are these going to be retired people, or?
One of the prompts I gave them, I said, you know, help, what do you think, who's our audience, who should we be talking to? One of the threads of conversation was that we're probably most likely to attract people that have some connection to the area. So I was like, maybe Hilton Head, because like everybody in Hilton Head is from Ohio, at least that's the, you know, people vacation there. So if they, you know, if Hilton Head starts to see flooding, then maybe that would be a target market, because a lot of Ohioans vacation and have connections in Hilton Head, so maybe some of those residents would want to be here. We talked about Florida, because we already have second homeowners that live in, they, they might have their residency in Florida because they get tax breaks for that, but they have a second home up here already, and maybe their friends and/or family might want to come here. So those were some of the conversations we had, but they, and that's really what they came back with, was that remote workers anywhere are a good target market, and then some of those places, people that like that quaint boating waterfront town that aren't able to afford or live on, in the coasts, might be attracted to the area.
A couple comments, because who wants to get home early, right? A few meetings ago, a couple meetings ago, I think, I made a comment about the conversation my daughter was in California related about her friends. Many of them are remote working, and they travel around, and that their friends had expressed to her that this seemed like an ideal place to do that. The second comment is, I don't know when the realities of sites need to be factored in to build that complex on the Sandusky Plaza, an old dump, I mean, an old landfill, I could envision being kind of problematic when they actually tried to do some soil borings and get to load bearing, and I don't know where, where that kind of thing, where they have to be, where they need to confront the realities of some of those logistics.
Maybe that's the graduate level phase two of the climate plan.
Did you tell any of them about the state theater wall blowing down?
Deratio.
Across from Daley's blowing down?
I think we did, we might have talked about that. I kind of zoomed them around to a bunch of different, and a couple of students came up here because they were just, mostly we did this over Zoom, a couple of students came up here to look around, and they were just like, we didn't think it was so cool. I'm like, oh yeah, Sandusky's great, you should come up here, it's an awesome little city.
Buffalo under 12 feet of snow, that's.
Right? We don't, we, yeah, we're protected by the bay, we don't get the lake effect snow, we're like, we got all these big city kind of amenities, but you get small-town friendliness, it's super walkable, gorgeous historic architecture, I mean, who wouldn't want to live here?
That, that was my question, if, did they say Buffalo and Minnesota?
Buffalo and Duluth are both using this climate haven idea as marketing, like those cities are doing it.
Did they say the percentages of in-migrations due to their climate?
That's what the students are reporting, I don't know.
How did?
I didn't fact-check any of their research.
Like Mr. Miller said, Buffalo is brutal in the winter, I mean, jeez.
Well, they're avoiding, they're avoiding forest fire, or, yeah, forest wildfires and tornadoes and hurricanes and landslides.
We arguably have the best climate in the, on the Great Lakes here, right in this spot.
The bay.
I think so.
One more selling feature.
Yeah, the bay protects us.
It gets a little warm, like if you're in Cleveland, you get like cool breezes off the lake almost on a normal day, you get the lake breeze, because the deep water doesn't warm up as quickly.
Yeah.
We get a little sticky year in August, but other than that, we get like half the snow, you know, and then Chardonnay, of course, gets probably about six times more snow than we get. This is a great place to be, and we got all the water we need, and we can keep it clean.
More than fresh water.
That would be nice if we could figure out how to keep it clean. Everybody's complaining about the fish smell in the bay right now, I think there's got to be a serious fish kill out there. We're backspiting a little bit on environmental issues, but this is a great place in the world to be, and by every measure.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Blair.
Absolutely.
We done, anybody?
I think you need a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yippee ki-yay.
Let me take a picture.
Wait, are they gone?
Did you second, did you second them?